And before I do, council, I'd like to make a statement. Last night it was brought to my attention, I did not know, a flyer was circulating. This flyer states, "Your voice is needed to save Murdoch Boulevard." And it states, "For several weeks, word on the street has been that Titusville City Council plans to make major changes to the parking and street design that would forever impact the beauty of Murdoch Boulevard." First of all, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'd like to know, I wish I could know, how many people received this propaganda? So we have, maybe half, okay. I want to tell you folks something. In the last year, there's been a whole lot of propaganda that's been circulated that is false. That is false. Never once has City Council ever, ever discussed a parking and street design that would impact, forever, impact the beauty of Murdoch Boulevard. The current plan, they say, I would love to know who circulated this nonsense. The current plan is to remove all or a portion of the tree-lined median to make way for angle parking along the east side of the street and change the zone. They had to add, "To touch a nerve of yours to allow for multifamily low-income housing." Pay attention to how they are able to spin. Again, it's fake news. This angers me. This is nothing more than the political crap that's going around in our community. I am all for a good election, a true election. An honest election. An election based on lies, based on lies. It's an election you all need to pay attention to. Because there is absolutely, absolutely nothing to this. There is some truth, however, to a zoning change. In a minute, we're going to discuss that. To allow for multifamily low-income housing to be placed in the former Pitt resident housing known as Ball Hall. Fake news. There's three units there to be sold. Whomever, whomever, whomever did it, shame on you. Shame on any of us that puts this kind of stuff out. Shame on us. In a minute, you will understand what the proposal is. Mr. Frazier?
I too am deeply troubled with the negative information that comes through this town anymore. There are people with ambitions. It's done in spite. And it's done to misinform you of what the truth is. People take and put stuff on these social medias, they put things like this, and I just don't understand. They don't vet any information. They think it's totally their privilege, well, I can say anything I want and just put it out there without being true. And while, unfortunately, some of you folks that may not have the wherewithal or whatever to time to find out what the facts are, you end up believing them. I'm sorry that you do. And hoodwink is what I've seen used in mailings and things like that. This again is one of these things, and there is a truly, true, a concerted effort to try and upset this city of Titusville, especially this town. I've received calls from those individuals, from an individual, that just makes negative connotations about our mayor, our city manager, when we're building a baseball park, saying we don't know anything about a baseball park and they know everything about it, why weren't they inquired? Yes, that is the truth. Well, I'll tell you about that baseball field had to go through the Pirates organization and also, what is it, the baseball fields for tomorrow, whatever, there's another program. They had to print, they had to sign off to the, I think they'd know a little bit more than the self-applied individual quarterback. I am totally dismayed, this has been going on for at least two years, this council hasn't endured. I could probably have a ream of paper this tall, a ream's of paper this tall, of just the emails that has been sent out as retaliation, as revenge.
And we're going to be discussing that. You folks need to know what's happening. It's coming out.
Retaliation and revenge. We see people that I don't have any social media accounts, I do that purposely because my feeling is, if I need to communicate with somebody, I will call you or I will meet with you, okay? And you can do just the same, too. But I am just disappointed, and I am so concerned that you people have been misleading. There is no way I can talk to my colleagues, we may not always agree with a decision, that's the way that things work, but we do discuss them. And nobody is in anybody's pocket. Perhaps what we ought to do is go back and find out the truth of the early 90s and what happened back there. And then why, when Mrs. Naugh was in office, that the city was looking at filing for bankruptcy. You no longer have that anymore. And you have people that are misleading others just because of sweat.
I too am deeply disturbed by the turn of events that have transpired over the last year, year and a half or so. I want to make it clear here at this point that what we have on our agenda is a reading of a bill to, first of all, turn a special use area into a residential R3. That is the property question from Pitt.
Can you speak up, Bill, I'm sorry, you're hard to hear.
Okay, well, if you keep your mouth shut, you know, maybe everybody else could.
That's disrespectful.
Keep your ear shut for yourself, thank you, sir. Anyway, the first thing on the docket regarding Murdoch Boulevard is basically changing our zoning map from a special use area to an R3, which is a multifamily residential use. The second thing on there is about property division. We feel it would be more advantageous to have the townhomes split from Ball Hall in an attempt to sell these properties. Having said that, let's move on.
Heather?
Well, I think just as, you know, humans as a whole, if someone mails you something and isn't willing to put their name on it, or show up here and look you in the face, maybe you should question it, not be so reliant on a piece of paper that no one takes responsibility for. So, you know, just think about that. Because where are they? Are they here?
Yes.
Is someone willing to take responsibility for this? And obviously, they try to push him to a peer-based decision, so.
I had three emails. One from a lovely, lovely lady, I won't give the first name, but Mrs. Osborn. Her concern is, "Is it true that the city plans on low-income housing and changes to Murdoch?" You're here? Fake news. I had one from Mr., I'm gonna say Pargan Rado. "It was informed of a potential plan to modify Murdoch Boulevard. Parking or the elimination of this beautiful tree-lined median. If I had my way and the money, I'd put that median right straight through Main Street, the most beautiful park in our town, not going to be disrupted, at least not by me." I had another, another letter from Jean Matthews. I called her last night, maybe the night before, I can't tell you for certain, had a great conversation with her. Again, she's concerned also. So those are the three. I want to thank all three of them for putting your name to it. Thank you very much. It's credible. All right. Dieta, would you please explain? And then, Richard, I'm gonna turn it over to you to explain what that is, okay?
Council Bill Number 7 of 2019, Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Titusville, Proffert County, Pennsylvania, to amend the zoning code of the City of Titusville by amending Section 1305.01 zoning map to adopt a revised zoning map in the form attached here too.
Would you explain what it is, Richard? This is our solicitor.
What the change would do, as the ordinance says, change the zoning map. So one part of the city will be changed from a special conservation district to an R3, which is a multiple-family residential district. It would allow any of the following uses by right: forestry, single-family dwellings, public parks and playgrounds, essential services, churches, no-impact home-based businesses, two-family dwellings, accessory uses and structures, conversion dwellings, boarding rooming homes, home occupations, bed and breakfast ends, group and family daycare homes, essential services, accessory use and structures, three- and four-family dwellings, and dwellings multiple family. And then there are another group of uses that are allowed by special exception, which would require additional approval. Those would be daycare centers, schools, assisted living facilities, public utility substations and facilities, insurance offices, lawyers, funeral homes, townhouse developments, personal care homes, adult daycare, hospitals, and professional offices.
And that would have to go before the zoning board?
That is correct. If somebody wanted to do it, it's a lot of special exception, they can't just do it, they have to go present it.
Okay. Now, at this time, I would like to turn this over to the public. I would like anyone, please, give us your name and address kindly, so it's on record, and please ask.
Kelly Popesci, I live on Murdoch Boulevard. I mean, I'm sorry if you guys have to school with us, but this is what, I mean, if you change this to a multifamily dwelling, I mean, we're not stupid, there is an ordinance saying how many parking places have to be there, there is not a parking there, so where are you going to make the parking? I mean, you're saying that you're changing it to multifamily, there's, there's, there's a city ordinance that says how many parking places have to be per unit?
Minutes.
How many?
Richard?
I don't know what's going on.
Kelly wants that information right in her name.
I do. Oh, thank you. I would be keen for multifamily dwelling. Well, for, if it was changed to a nursing home, that is one of the choices, right? Like an assisted living. I gotta find that paper. Nursing homes and hospitals, you have to have one per every two beds, plus a parking place for every employee. There is not that space there.
Well, that would be up to the developer, so they can't paint the street. Like, if I decide to make mine a duplex, I can't put a parking lot on my street.
Exactly. If I decide to open a, have a rental property, you're not going to close down a street for me, are you?
But that's what I'm saying, like, you can't wear out the street.
Where you get, you get it.
That's up to the developer.
If you're looking at these townhouses, we already know where to get it.
Whoever wishes to, excuse me, whoever wishes to develop that property, it's basically buyer beware. Whatever you wish to do or wish to change, it's got to be within and on that property.
Right. Have you considered, I mean, Ball Hall was useless, I mean, when was it built? Have you considered getting rid of that and making that parking board and making those other two properties more?
But that'd be up to, instead of the city taking the expense, because that'd be tax money, it would be up to the developer if they would want to buy both properties and tear one down. I mean, to spend the tax money on doing that, just so then someone could buy that property and have a parking lot at the city's expense, that would be again up to the developer on what they chose to do with that. They could buy both properties, tear one down, and make a parking lot.
What's to say they're not going to buy this property and they come to you and say, "Please, please, we need this"? And it's going to turn into a waste of land.
How long here, are you gonna say no?
Yeah, I mean, you can't, again, paint the street, if that's not their property. You buy a property, just like any house, Bill buys a property, if he makes a duplex out of it, he has to stay confined on that property. That would be up to the person who bought the property.
Well, I personally would ask you just to not vote on this tonight, so everybody can see the city ordinances and see what the rules are, and so, I mean, you don't know, you didn't know off the top of your head. So I'm asking everybody to research this before you vote. Because this is my property, this is my backyard, this is, this is what I look at, and I'm asking you not to.
Hi, my name's John Crouch, I live up at 708 North Perry. And first thing I'd like to say is, this seems like a little bit tense in here from the early part of this, like we're given popcorn and saying, "Don't believe everything on social media." I received one of these, somebody handed one to me, one of these when I was coming in here tonight, and I got a chance to read over it a little bit. But today, I was handed a letter from the Jean Matthews family, and asked me, said, she could not make it here this evening because she's 89 years old, would I be willing to read it on her behalf? And I have a copy of it, if you guys want a copy of it when I'm done, that's fine. But this is what it says. Dear City Council members, September 21st, 2019. This letter is a response to the planning zoning change of Murdoch Boulevard. We chose to build on our lot in 1959 because it was across the street from a park area that had been deeded to the city for that purpose many years ago. When Mr. Burgess deeded the land to the city, it was explicitly stated that the land should remain a park. Now that the land is no longer abused to the University of Pittsburgh, the land should revert back to being a park. If not, perhaps the property should be returned to the heirs of Mr. Burgess. My sons used to play in that wooded area, number two, and remember playing by a spring where Ball Hall now sits. It was memorable, because the spring was a source of clay to monkey around. The area was rezoned to allow construction of Ball Hall and the University of Pittsburgh facilities. This worked for a few years until the spring in the facility caused structural damage and made Ball Hall unfit for use. If it was unfit for Pitt, why would it be fit for other houses? Is the city opening itself up for future liability? For example, if new residents become ill from the mold that the University of Pittsburgh experts were unable to remediate? Is it even possible to rework Ball Hall with proper plumbing, et cetera, for multifamily housing if that was the case? The area where Ball Hall now sits is probably not suitable for any structure. Has a geological survey focused on groundwater been done for that area? Number five, is it a good idea to put high-density housing next to a playground where substantially increased volume would be dangerous to small children? Number six, the proposed plan would destroy the tree-lined, could, would destroy the tree-lined median, which past private financial supporters made possible to help beautify the city and draw more people to Burgess Park. Number seven, property values on the Boulevard and parts of Spruce Walnut, Main Streets will drop along with city income from those properties, probably resulting in a property tax increase for everyone in the city, or the reduction of city services. Number eight, does the city really need more low-income housing? How much of the already available low-income housing in the city is being used? How many vacant or abandoned homes does Titusville have? Why not renovate those structures, some of which have been, have some historic value or architectural charm and preserve the character of this town? Number nine, is it even legal to sell a building that has mold in it? What are our liabilities? Number 10, there's two more. Why were the property owners of Murdoch Boulevard and its surrounding areas not notified of this proposed, this proposal by letter from the city? Rather than trying to retrofit Ball Hall with the possibility that might need to be torn down afterwards due to mold or foundation problems due to groundwater, perhaps it would be better to use the money from the sale of the townhouses to tear down Ball Hall and make it more green space? And there would be no need for changes to the Boulevard itself. Number 12, the last one, perhaps the city council should delay a decision pending additional public discussion, so that more residents of our beautiful city can consider what other uses they would like to see for this part of Burgess Park. In any case, I think it would be unwise to rush in to renovate a building that the lawyers and construction engineers of the University of Pittsburgh wanted to give away. And just, and that's her, and this is me. This thing that I was given, coming in tonight, and the mayor asked, you know, will the elephant in the room stand up? My question is, I, as well as many other residents in the city, have been seeing things in the newspaper and received flyers in the mail called hoodwink this, hoodwink that. Nowhere on that flyer does it say, it, people were asking, they said, "What's from concerned citizens"? Well, we don't know who that is. People, people surmise, said it came from City Hall, people surmise, said it came from Esther, but where did that come from? That's our question.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Hi, Mayor, I have a question.
What's your name and an address?
James Elliott, 306 North Franklin Street, Titusville, PA, 16354. Back to Kelly's thing about it, do you think maybe you're putting the cart in front of the horse with this, with the voting? Maybe you should sell it to the developer, allow him to file for a variance to change his own.
That's a great idea.
I mean, that makes sense. Then if you have any issues, you can do it then, not now.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing done, we'll close the hearing. Okay. We're going to move into the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance, let's stand. Heavenly Father, I want to thank you for your mercy and your love to us. I pray, Father, that you enter into this room and enter into our meeting and help us to make the wisest decisions for our city. Lord Jesus, in the worst kind of way, we need you. I thank you for your love, your mercy, your kindness, your tenderness to us. And I lay myself at your feet, telling you that I so need you. Please be with us, Father God, and help us to run this city the way you have. May your blessing fall, may your blessing rain upon us. I ask it all in Jesus' holy name, amen. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the vision and justice for all. Okay. Roll call?
Mr. Edelman?
Here.
Mr. Frazier?
Here.
Mrs. Leonardi?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Last week, did we have an executive meeting after that? No, okay. Moving on to the adoption of the agenda, and I would like to amend the agenda to move to have a City Council appointment as the first order of business. So is there a motion to move changing, making that amendment? Hold on a second, please. Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Hold on a second, folks. I haven't had the time to blow that out. Is there approval of the minutes? Second bill? Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes. Public participation pertaining to agenda items, a maximum 30 minutes with a timeline limit of five minutes per individual speaker, city taxpayers. Hold on a second, I'll bring that right to you, that's gonna be the first line of this. Okay. Moving on to that, is there a motion? Or what is the motion for the City Council vacancy to replace Mr. Keith Bromley?
I'll make a motion to accept Tammy Champion.
And I will second that motion.
Saying that, the following candidates were interviewed after last Tuesday's City's Council meeting, Mr. John from Crouch of 708 North Perry Street and Mrs. Tammy Champion of 418 West Main Street. And the results of those interviews are as follows. Mrs. Tammy Champion has been a member of this community for 20 years. Throughout the last 12 years on council, she's attended many meetings. She is community-minded and has served on, and is serving on the Board of Health as well as sitting as past Secretary of the Airport Authority. During last week's interview, we found that Tammy supports the goals of this council, being fiscally conservative. She praised the goal this administration has worked hard for, to be debt-free in May of next year. Mr. Elliott? Mr. Elliott, may I ask you to please be quiet because you're interrupting?
Thank you.
Thank you. She praised the goal this administration has worked hard to be debt-free in May of next year. Mrs. Champion believes that being debt-free is a big deal. Since Titusville will no longer be servicing debt, she expressed her desire to explore the possibility of reducing rates for future city services. And in my opinion, based on last week's conversation, Mrs. Champion presented herself as a person with genuine regard for Titusville, as who is interested in serving to assist council's ongoing efforts for the best interest of the city. Concerns were expressed by City Council regarding Mr. Crouch's involvement and association with the political action group moving Titusville forward.
I object, Mr. Solicitor, wait a minute, I object. This is, this is, I'm objecting to you. They already, they already said who they're gonna pay. So I think this is becoming a political meeting for her to talk about things that I told her last week in a private, in an employee interview. They don't have a right to sit here and talk about my interview to these people and tell them about me belonging to some political action committee, because I don't belong to a political action committee. Everybody in here knows that I'm running on the November ballot, and this is, this should not, they've already talked about Tammy Champion. If they're gonna vote on her, they don't need to vote on me, she doesn't need to talk about me.
Well, I think she's stating the reasons why Tammy Champion rather than you is the other candidate.
And that, in that meeting is, is, under the right-to-know law, you have a right to hear that, that interview.
If somebody files a right-to-know.
If you file the right-to-know.
Did they file, did they file a right-to-know?
I'm done talking. I'm done interrupting.
Your gaslighting us.
Enough, John. Concerns were expressed by Titusville City Council regarding Mr. Crouch's involvement and association with the political action group moving Titusville forward, whose president is his brother-in-law, Mr. Roger Gordon. Mr. Crouch served us as Secretary of this group. This group has brought in about deep division within the City of Titusville by circulating flyers that spread unsubstantial claims and false accusations against City Council, myself and the city manager. These claims and false accusations are all refuted with clear evidence. Within one of the circulations to the citizens of Titusville, it was stated, in order to change the misdirection of City Hall administration and the current City Council membership that unilaterally, laterally supports the city manager, it is necessary to elect three City Council members. Mr. Crouch's name is listed on this flyer and is on the ballot for the November election as one of the three candidates referenced in the above statement. The current administration stands for unity, no matter your political affiliation, supporting the hometown community that we all enjoy, transparency and accountability regarding wise financial decisions made for the betterment of the city future, and building solid infrastructure to attract a variety of businesses that we welcome into our city. Unfortunately, Mr. Crouch alignment with the views of the political action group previously mentioned detailing their direct opposition to these positive goals set forth by City Council in the current management has negated his, in my opinion, eligibility to be seated for the open seat on the current City Council.
But do I have permission, since my name is mentioned there, to just refute two things that she said there, Mr. Solicitor? Do I have?
The mayor's running the meeting, so.
I would not, or the political.
I'm not part of the political action committee, Roger Gordon is not part of the political action committee, and I told you that last week, and you're lying to the people tonight.
Mr. Crouch, your name has been on all the stuff that's been circulated, we already discussed this.
Don't turn this, please don't turn a meeting into a political thing, I'm gonna talk about it.
You're right, stop. You won't, don't, don't address it anymore. It's enough.
Don't talk to me like that, that's disrespectful.
It's enough, John.
And harassing.
You're harassing me.
Oh my God.
Shut up.
It's enough.
You're not gonna do that.
Would you contact, we're gonna, I'm going to.
No, you're not going to, Esther, the people of this town are already embarrassed, if you call the police every time something, you as the leader should be able to handle this and have a nice conversation, and if you weren't lying to the people, I wouldn't have to defend myself. I don't, I told you last week, I came in your salon and told you, I didn't care if you didn't pick me, but don't try, don't try to do a character assassination.
We're gonna move on. At the end of the meeting, you'll have me able to converse. All right. Tammy, would you please come and we will administer the oath of. Oh, we have to vote, I'm sorry.
See, it's already a shoe man. This is set up.
This is enough.
They didn't even vote.
Okay, vote, please. Call the roll.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith didn't even vote.
Would you come forth and administer the oath of office, Richard?
Sir, Mr. Bester. Talk about ethics.
Tammy?
I, right hand, yeah, right hand, if you'd repeat after me, I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Thank you.
I can't believe you memorized that.
I've done it a few times.
Tammy, come on up and have a seat, please.
Can I get myself?
Yes, you sure can.
Nobody plans. Hey Mayor, can you tell us what political party you're representing?
Stop, please stop. It's enough, Jim. Okay, is there a motion to, oh, before I, before I go any further, Tammy can pick up where left off, is she allowed to vote on this stuff?
Yes, she's not a member of council.
Okay, you're a member of council, Tammy? Is there a motion to accept the operational reports of the Finance, Fire, Human Resources, Risk Management, Treasury, Public Works, Water, Wastewater for the month of June two thousand nineteen is submitted and placed on file? Is there? Is there a motion, oh, call the roll, please. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Champion?
I'm sorry, I'm gonna abstain on voting for the rest of the meeting since I just received the package. I have no information on any of this stuff, and I don't have any.
That's understandable.
Thank you, I'm ready to abstain.
Okay, is there, call the roll, please. Did you do that, okay. Is there a motion to accept and place on file the minutes of the Benson Library Board of eight twenty, the Housing Authority of seven sixteen, the Planning Commission of eight eight?
I'll make that motion.
Heather? Hold on a second. Comments or questions? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonardi?
Yes.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Is there a motion to ratify the bill listing warrants dated eight, three, nine thirteen, and nine twenty? Bill?
I'll second.
Heather? Comments or questions that I want for the record or for to let folks know? Mr. Mann Ross sends us the bill listings. We have the opportunity to look at them over, we have the opportunity of asking questions, or we ask questions here, but we are able to review them during the month. Are there any questions or comments? And I would encourage the citizens to go on, go into the city hall and take a look at the bill listings. Once a month, take a look at them. Call the roll.
Mrs. Leonardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Second reading, non-uniform pension plan amendment, is there a motion to adopt Council Bill number six of two thousand nineteen on second reading? Heather? Comments or questions? Call the roll.
Mrs. Leonardi?
Yes.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes. First reading, is the zoning map change? Is there a motion to introduce Council Bill number seven, two thousand nineteen, on the first reading?
I'll make that motion.
Heather? Is there a second?
I will second.
Yeah, please.
Council Bill number seven of two thousand nineteen, ordinance of the city council of the city of Titusville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, to amend the zoning code of the city of Titusville by amending section thirteen oh five point oh one zoning map to adopt a revised zoning map in the form attached here too. And this being the first reading does not set everything in stone, it opens it up for another discussion, and the second reading would not occur until the vote meeting in October.
We're gonna take a look at it. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I guess, I would like to comment that it's, I don't wanna say imperative, but it would certainly lower the burden of the city sooner than we can get this done, and particularly heading into the cold season, it's not something that we would prefer to keep doing.
Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Mrs. Leonardi?
Yes.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes. Is there a motion to approve the Murdock Boulevard subdivision?
I'll make the motion.
Bill, did you say? Okay.
I'll second.
Second, Heather? All right.
This is the actual subdivision of the townhouses from Ball Hall. We address the Ball Hall as new three twenty-two Murdock Boulevard, and the townhouses as three twenty-four. We receive permission go ahead from the Crawford County Planning Commission to subdivide those properties, so we went ahead and had them surveyed, and this is just the final step to close that subdivision out.
Comments or questions? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonardi?
Yes.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Two thousand eighteen CDVG modification, a motion to adopt Resolution number fifteen, two thousand nineteen.
Motion to accept, Mayor.
Donald? Bill? It's up.
Resolution number fifteen of two thousand nineteen, a resolution of the city of Titusville authorized in approving the modification of its fiscal year two thousand eighteen community development block grant, CDVG funds, with the Department of Community and Economic Development, DCEV, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. This modification moves the money that was appropriated in the two thousand eighteen CDVG application for the South Carey Street Bridge to the construction for the fire station so that we can raise the doors on the fire station so we can house our new Latin.
Comments or questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonardi?
Yes.
CDVG for your housing, is there a motion, Resolution number sixteen of two thousand nineteen, to adopt?
Motion to adopt, Mayor.
Donald?
I'll second. Resolution number sixteen of two thousand nineteen is the fair housing resolution, this is required by CDVG to be passed every year that the city submits an application for CDVG.
Comments or questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonardi?
Yes.
Sales city property, the mall, Murdock Boulevard, is there a motion to adopt Resolution number seventeen of two thousand nineteen?
I'll make that motion.
Heather? I'll second it.
Resolution number seventeen of two thousand nineteen, resolution of the city council of the city of Titusville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, setting an estimated value of city real estate and authorizing the city manager to proceed with the transfer of city property. The only thing that we would need to address on this is the value that you would like for three twenty-two and three twenty-four.
I think we discussed that last week, of setting two hundred thousand on the townhouses and a hundred on the ball hall.
Or two fifty.
Two fifty.
Yeah.
I was thinking it was, anybody that was here last week, do you remember that figure? I don't have it, Richard, do you remember?
One hundred two.
I was thinking it was a hundred each. So it would be two hundred for the two of them.
It was a hundred for the ball hall.
Yes, and another for the ball hall, and two for the other. Okay. Rich, how could you address this? Can I make the, um, motion to read what we discussed last week, whether it was two hundred or?
I think it would be better to have the precise numbers.
Okay, folks?
I can two and one.
Two and one, okay.
Because they reserve the right to refuse all.
That's correct. You have the right to refuse it. So the minimum bid for the town is two hundred, and the ball hall is a hundred. Okay. Okay. With the right to refuse. All right, are we good? Call the roll.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonardi?
Yes.
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution eighteen of two thousand nineteen, the please pension actuary assumptions? Donald? Bill?
Resolution number eighteen of two thousand nineteen, a resolution of the city of Titusville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, adopting a five-year smoothing method to determine the actuarial value of assets as part of the actuarial evaluation for the city of Titusville Police Pension Plan, according to section two of three point two of the regulations covering the implementation of the actuarial funding rules of Act two oh five of nineteen eighty-four.
Comments or questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution nineteen of two thousand nineteen, the fired pension actuary assumptions? Donald?
Resolution nineteen of two thousand nineteen is the same for the firing pension.
Give me a second.
Edelman?
Comments or questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonardi?
Yes.
Is there a motion to reappoint Steve Coleman to the Housing Authority to a five-year term ending ten, nine, of twenty, oh, I'm sorry, a motion to adopt Resolution twenty of two thousand nineteen, the folks center support.
It's actually a proclamation under a resolution.
A proclamation.
I'll make that motion.
Heather?
I'll second it.
Donald? Comments or questions?
I think it provides a service for a lot of people, and there's also a lot of jobs in the Banjo County, and I know that some of them are sometimes still, still there.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonardi?
Yes.
Is there a motion to reappoint Steve Coleman to the Housing Authority to a five-year term ending ten, nine, twenty-four?
Motion to reappoint.
Donald?
I'll second.
Heather? Comments or questions? Heather?
He does a great job, so I'm happy he wanted to serve on that committee again.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonardi?
Yes.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Is there a motion to accept the resignation of Sharon Lemling, Rose Nystrom, and Don Smith from the Civil Service Commission?
Motion to accept the pre-grad.
Yep.
I will second the pre-grad.
I agree. Any comments or questions? Please notify them that we do regret. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonardi?
Yes.
I'm thankful. Is there, is there a motion to agree, to appoint Don Morris Jr. to the Civil Service Commission to an unexpired term ending one one twenty?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Comments or questions? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Leonardi?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes. Moving on to public participation?
I do have one more thing that has nothing to do with what we talked about before, although I don't mind talking one-on-one to anybody that wants to ask me about the other questions. In the, in the, in the first part of the meeting, one of the things you read, and it's on this sheet right here, is Facebook and social media is not always a reliable source and never take place, and you stated that you want us to have an open, honest election, a hundred percent for that. Then why was this given to me, and I actually went and checked to make sure it's there, that this represents Titusville, Titusville, PA, Mayor Esther M. Smith, that says, be sure to cast your vote November for Jay LaFert and Billy, why would you do that as the mayor on the Titusville PA Mayor website? Because people from outside of town are wondering what's going on in our town, because most towns use the Facebook pages for mostly, always positive, and to want to attract people to come to town here, so if we want an open, honest election, why are you telling us on the city's Facebook page, on your Facebook pages put out by the city, why are you telling us to vote? I'd like to answer that.
Are there any other questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yeah, I'd like to know if you're gonna answer Mr. Crouch's question.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions?
Larry, I'm a.
Wait a minute, wait, wait a second, just one second. I'm sorry, gentleman in the back, sorry about that, Larry. Your name and, not your name.
Joe Bobo, I live along Grove Street. I have a question about the properties that are gonna be sold. Is that gonna be a sealed bid, or is it gonna be open bid with interviews, and do you have a timetable of when that's gonna happen?
It will be a sealed bid process, there will be an open house for everybody, including[1780.72] There will be an open house for everybody, including anybody in the public that wants to walk through the properties on October eleventh and October twelfth, twenty-nine and one.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Larry, I'm from one twenty West Walnut. Um, I was curious, and I have no problems with council and what you've done, but the, uh, uh, on replacing the councilman, uh, last time, you went to an executive session. And is this normal rather than having an open interview with the public? Why did we go to the executive session? I had asked you prior to that, you told me executive, but I'm just curious.
Richard?
Well, it was not an executive session, it was just an interview session.
Bet it was not public.
Correct.
Why?
I would say basically that's up to council, but I don't know that there's ever been an interview that's been public. I think it's pretty uncomfortable.
On other boards that I've been on and so forth, it was always an open interview for the simple reason of, uh, you know, being open, you know, not being, I.
Well, but you have somebody being interviewed by possibly four or five people, not very comfortable as it is. And then if you have a room full of people as an audience, it's even worse. I would assume that's the main reason to do interviews in, uh, outside the public.
Isn't it likewise a job interview?
Pardon?
It's a job interview since you get paid for the position.
Well, I wouldn't call it a job interview cause it's, you know, it's public position. It's not, not as if you could be fired by council if, uh, once you're in.
Okay. My name is Anna Slavel, and I'm the five eighteen county manager. And I just kinda wanted to, um, express my feelings, uh, about what's happened here tonight and what has been happening in the past few months. Um, when I relocated here in Colorado, I was born and raised here, and I have a lot of good memories about my childhood here. And I've expressed this before in an open forum that we had here. And, um, some things started to come to me, rumors and, and claims and accusations. And this is how, and I would recommend this for everyone in this town. Um, the mayor has been really faithful, um, on her website about recommending this, that when you hear something, first of all, use critical thinking skills. Ask the big question, why? And who and who could benefit from this? And, um, so that being said, and if we are professional, intelligent adults, this is what surprises me. It's kinda like what happened a few minutes ago, like we're on the playground having a tussle. But we have professional lives. We have, um, our day-to-day where we're trying to make a living and provide for our children, grandchildren, whatever. And so when I started hearing these rumors, I don't care who's my friend or who is my coworker. I'm going to ask this, the questions of where did you get this information? Is it credible? Not just jump on the bandwagon and believe in whatever you hear. And, um, I, I would like this going forward here, if we're gonna ever, uh, you know, have a progress in this town, if we're gonna ever have that in unity and support one another. What has happened in the past with the ridiculous liars that had nothing but false accusations, as has been mentioned? Because when you investigate, which I did personally, and find that, oh, wait, this isn't true, this isn't correct. Okay, I don't care who's peddling it or who likes who or I grew up with who. If it's false, we have to stand against it. And the only reason, as my interpretation of the mayor, um, on her Facebook page, because she is established, is just refuting the allegations and accusations as a defense against what has been happening. She's not, doesn't have an agenda to try to rip someone apart or attack. And you know what? Um, some of the Facebook that I have seen by people here in this room is appalling. It's like you're in fifth grade, that you have to attack by taking pictures of people and, and making little snide remarks about their appearance. It is absolutely immature, unprofessional. And I would think at this time in our lives especially, you can kinda give it an excuse if you're in school. But here we are adults, we should really work together to try to, and if you do disagree and you don't, uh, promote or whatever, there is a way to handle it. When someone is speaking, you wait for them to finish, then you respond. That is honest, open, respectful dialogue. To interrupt and then throw accusations is not the way adults should communicate. If we stand against bullying, and this is a passionate interview, because if we stand against bullying in our schools, rightfully so, but we allow it as adults in, on big social media, in meetings as this, how can we expect our kids to look up to us as an example against this bullying? And I just wanted to express myself, because I'm actually appalled, I'm just like, what? We are professional, intelligent people, we should be. And so I'm just like, there are a lot of new faces here to see through the time. And I'm happy about that. When I first came, it was like ten people and I'm like, oh my word, this is all that the town cares about. But I would, I'd just like to say, don't take this as the base value of the representation of what happened here tonight of our town. Because the city council has proven themselves, um, the city manager, unbelievable, we're gonna be out of debt. There is merit to that. We can do something with that money if we're not paying it. And so anyway, I just wanted to express myself here, um, to please make an, an appeal. Let's try to work together, be professional, you know, be considerate and, uh, respect one another. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Oh, yes, um, turn it over.
I, I'd like to step back as a, as a councilman at this point, uh, since it is public participation time. And I would like to let folks know that I am launching a write-in candidacy for city council coming up in November. And appreciate any support that we can get from you folks. Thank you.
Counsel?
Tammy? As a new member, I would like to first of all thank everybody here for their confidence in me and voting for me to, um, take the place of the vacant office. Also, I just wanna point out to everyone in the town who appears so concerned and vocal, there were only two people who applied for this position. Two. How many people are citizens of Titusville? So, you know, thank you all for, we're gonna criticize and snite and backbite, but it was just me and, me and John who stood up. Okay, and I'm looking forward to working with you guys and with anyone else who is gonna be elected in November. Thank you.
Heather?
Congratulations, by the way, to Tammy Chilton.
Uh, in the beginning, I meant to, uh, bring it to your attention, Mr. Mann Ross wasn't here tonight. Um, he has, there's a serious health issue, uh, in his family that didn't allow him to make it. And I think we need to add, uh, that issue to, to our prayers. So please, let's, um, pray for whatever Larry's going through and whatever his family's going through. All right, uh, with saying that, I wanna thank everyone for coming. I want you to know that we're gonna look into this. All right, we don't just decide something, we have been discussing this, um, what's that? For about a year. Yeah, we have been talking about and discussing the purchase of those buildings for about a year. Um, whether or not it hit the papers, I don't, I can't tell you for certain, but that has been a topic of discussion for about a year. So it isn't something that we just did overnight. Um, that, like I said, that's the first reading, we're gonna take a look into it and see, um, I wanna explore what Mrs. Matthews has said, has said, and want you to know that we are listening. With that being said, I'm gonna ask you, please, please, come to every council meeting.
Uh, can you give an address?
Do you need an address, please? Do you, do you have a, Naomi, she's a taxpayer in town?
Taxpayer.
The public comment section is over.
Okay.
It's only meant for people that are taxpayers in town, correct?
That is correct.
City taxpayers.
That is correct. Naomi, you're a taxpayer, you're welcome to speak.
Naomi Westo, Seventh Way West. May I speak? Naomi, just speak, please. Um, Seventh Way West Walnut Street. If I understand folks correctly, does that mean for, like, all these votes here on, on that, um, Murdock Boulevard, that that is definitely will not be affected in any way?
Absolutely not. Absolutely not.
Not.
Period. Not.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions? Okay. Yes, I'm, I just.
Sorry.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Oh, you already said that, I'm sorry, Dawn. Uh, Bill? Call the roll, please?
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes. Oh, please come back next month, please come back.